Good evening, welcome to the July 21st, 2020 School Committee Meeting. We're in the TES gym today. As always, this meeting is audio and video recorded. The call is meeting to order. Please now introduce yourself to my left.
Sharon Fairbanks.
Jeff Boe.
Mike Moran.
David Frank.
Hi Mike Frank, super director. Ryan McMahon.
I'm Miss Stanton.
Julie Westerfield.
Anthony Terrell.
Joe Masanis, School Business Administrator.
Natalie Gavest, Student Representative.
All rise and禮 please. What would you wish to define the United States of America? And to the Republic for which it stands, on our nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all? Alright. I will seek a motion to approve the school committee minutes of July 7th, 2020. The executive session minutes of July 7th, 2020. The executive session minutes from April 27th, 2020. The executive session minutes are now to be released at this time. Mr. Chair, I make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Any discussion? All favor.
Aye.
opposed? Chair 700. Correspondents?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In your drive, I find that information from MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, the information in there is current to professional development opportunities that they forward to offer to new coming, uh, new school committee members as well as existing school committee members. Last year, we did something a little bit different. We brought in Paul Ash as a consultant for professional development. So if we could maybe like to explore the MASC component or Paul Ash or something to go based to a PB this year, we can certainly have that conversation at some point. So that's in the drive information. Additionally, in your drive information, the joint MASC and MASSS conference usually held in Cape in November has been canceled. What they'll probably do is something out of the old joint conference, which we just did for our subjects too, which actually was pretty good. So hopefully they'll come up something that we can have some kind of virtual get together. So that's what's in the drive. I do want to share one of these correspondences we've seen this afternoon regarding our fall sports. So the MIA has postponed the start of fall sports to September 14th. No games can begin until October 1st. They're still allowing the governor to look at what sports, the governor and the commissioner, to determine which sports will be eligible to start on September 14th. They're concerned that some high contact sports might not be an option, but a golf or a cross country could be an option. So, um, so the door, the jury's still out on what it's gonna look like exactly, but today was the day that everyone was waiting for the decision and now the hearing is being pushed into the number. So that's why I have that information on that. As more information comes about also, continue your comments.
Does that mean no person gets in this until fall season?
That means no coach directly practices.
Thank you.
Jeff, have we opened enrollment to fall sports or fall committees? Please.
So two questions, yes, we've opened them all. We've not talked to FIS yet. To my knowledge, Joe, I don't think we started that yet. We gotta wait and see where we are.
We actually shut down the payment page for all of the programs that were posted.
So they've done the online registration on the open.
That's it, correspondents. Is there any comments, questions? You see none? Share the success. Natalie?
Reopening committees have been meeting regularly to develop comprehensive plans for the 2020 to 2021 school year. The primary focus of their work has been on the health, safety, and wellbeing of the students, staff, and families. Principal Kavanaugh is so appreciative of the tireless effort shown by the TES committee members, which is comprised of educators, paraprofessionals, nurses, counselors, parents, Mrs. Souza, Mr. Riley, and Mr. Sammet. At TMS, they keep updating their student schedules and handing out yearbooks. Committee work in the district continues and teachers continue to do online learning this summer. The building is almost completely cleaned and they are trying out different configurations in the classroom. At a THS, the class of 2020 celebrated their graduation of Pierce Field this past Sunday.
Thank you. School building committee, you're gonna hold on to my name. Personnel? Dr. Stot. Thank you. Unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In your drive, we need to find a modified meeting schedule for last time. Um, I know there's some conflicts in there, so we tried to amend the dates now to make, uh, to make it as possible for it to be in person as possible. So there's a proposed 2021 meeting schedule that is different than what you received last time and the hope is that we can approve that tonight so we can get that on that school committee page. I'm wondering now where you can find that page. We have a petition filed with that, so that makes sense. We're looking for action to approve the 2021 meeting schedule.
Of course, subject to change given. Conditions. Conditions. I will seek a motion to approve the proposed meeting schedule.
I'll make that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I carry 700. Who does this?
Mr. Chair, uh, so as, as you recall, when we left, left, last left, at least, let me say, um, we had committed to hiring Leftfield as the owner project manager for the school building project. We went through the OPM interview selection panel with the MSBA. It was a rigorous one hour grilling on Leftfield by the MSBA. Very intense, it was very knowledgeable to the owner to really learn a lot about what MSBA's assistance was looking for. So, uh, so I'm confused because at the end of that, uh, there were no issues at all. Leftfield will come on board as our OPM. I think, uh, Chair Lurston is executing the contract, I believe, today to get in to MSBA. But the next step in that process is we need to appoint a three-person committee to serve with the MSBA for the design selection process. The full design and selection committee is a 16-member committee. The town of Tinswell has three votes. The superintendent by name and appointee from the board of selectmen, who they voted one night to make non-yes for the appointee, and the school committee gets a representative to that. So the three of us will give three local votes on that 16-member committee to determine which designer that will go, uh, with the design. So we need tonight, um, a nomination and probably not a bad idea to have on there in cases of political day.
I should mention that Paul Medjoe, who recently left us, sent me an email and he's interested and he offered to be in the school committee representative on this committee. Choose him.
I, I appreciate Paul's offer, um, but I do think it should be somebody from the school committee. I'd like to nominate Tony out of the 20s overall as the representative of the school committee.
Okay.
Second. I'll take the second.
Those? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I wanted to do one to accept.
Yeah.
You're so proud of the question. It was culture, it was culture of the building committee. He thought this was coming, so.
I didn't think, uh, yeah. But yes, thank you.
Alright, so we got Tony.
Yeah.
So we do need an alternate also.
All on my behalf.
I'll be honest with you. Natalie Fairbanks, you have a second?
Yeah, true or second, yes. Any discussion? Sorry, who's before you? Okay. That's our whole thing. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I carry 700.
Congratulations.
Excellent, thank you. So when I get information on that, we'll, 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 and I want to thank Paul for our opportunity to step up. 9B. Subcommittee assignments.
So 9B makes me cringe every year because I actually have to assign you different roles. Use the other way around, you're telling me what to do. But, but I took the feedback that I received from everyone and I tried to balance it as best I could with this. Uh, I guess a couple of points of, of comments I'll make is, you know, I think it's good that we have some alternates on some of these committees. You know, well, two or three years ago, we had to sign the alternative capital asset just because, you know, it's good that you get two votes and you need those two votes at the table, particularly with this money involved. So, um, so I think that makes sense to have that all there as well as the MASC and it's over the bill side because sometimes if one person can't go and sign the bills, it's good to have another person available. Uh, but I hope everyone's okay with the subcommittee assignments. Again, this is going to be a big year for negotiations. Um, we'll talk more about that later. And I, I did the best I could with all the requests, that's all we have. Happy to remind them if anyone, at first, if you.
So I'll seek a motion to approve the subcommittee assignments.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I carry 700.
Mr. Chair, those are also on the school committee webpage.
Excellent. Is there a timeline for when they'll be published?
Uh, I was waiting for the specifics. So I'm not supposed to talk in some, so a lot of this stuff.
Yep. Sorry. No way I said it tonight. Okay. The, uh, MS, MASC, that's Association of School Committee Members. The Board of Directors have come up with two proposals for consideration of school committees to either accept or to just take in this information. Two resolutions. Uh, the first one is COVID-19 expenses, um, asking as a board for the state to fully reimburse all district districts for their COVID-19 expenses. Roughly about 180 districts have already signed on to this, have accepted it, and have expressed their support to the MASC, MASC, this resolution. If anyone has not read it yet, um, and/or if I need to read it, I will. Is it necessary as a chair or?
I agree, does anybody need a small unit? To your drive. It's not gonna work. It sounds like everybody can smile with it.
Okay. Um, the second resolution is, uh, the, to support social and economic interracial justice in our communities. Another one, I don't know if anyone has, um, read this yet or not. Uh, this has been supported by 125 districts so far across the state. And it basically states that we as a district, uh, we, uh, will support evaluating our hiring practices in the district, our educational practices, uh, and evaluating our curriculum to make sure that it does support interracial and social justice. There are quite a few districts around the state, particularly in large, in larger cities, that have a curriculum coordinated specifically for racial and social justice. They have been training all of their teachers, all of their staff in ways that they can improve communication with their students, particularly those of color. And working with the HR departments in showing that they're not, that they're not, um, looking past somebody's, uh, somebody's skin color because maybe they have really not as much experience, particularly in, uh, districts, they do not have a large population. I know that there is a statement at the very end that you can read. I am not trying to embarrass that one. I'm not trying to push any political agendas. I do know that of those 125, 126 districts that have accepted it, it's been about 50/50, about 50% of them have modified it somewhat. That last line particularly, which seems to be the biggest issue is, is, "We must ensure our own school culture that of every district in common of its anti-racist." That acknowledges that all lives cannot matter until Black lives matter. I'm not going either way with that because as I said, I don't want to make a political statement. We can modify that a bit if you'd like, so that as a board, we're not making a political statement, uh, but just that we're supporting the, uh, resolution for, for its intent. And wording doesn't have to be standard, that change if anyone's uncomfortable. So I would ask this board to consider the two resolutions and hopefully vote tonight whether we will write any set down. Was anyone having questions? I, we have to take any questions if anyone here wants to.
Resolution number one. Would the coronavirus, most of that is covered through the character program, right? Is that, or is this totally separate from the character program?
Well, I'm sure this, this, the senior can answer that a little bit better, but I believe not all of this.
So, so the town, the town is getting a little over $1 million, the town as a whole, under the CARES Act. The school committee will be getting an additional 350 some thousand dollars from the COVID relief fund. Whether or not a million three, we go over it, then the question becomes, should there be another source? I mean, I think it's, you know, pretty safe to assume that a million three would probably most likely cover everything we need to do. But again, not knowing where we're gonna be.
We as a town, no, we as a school, we as a town.
Right, we, 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 we're a full town. But not knowing today how far we have to make other matters than other financial burdens. Having a resolution like this certainly won't hurt our position to say, if, you know, we realize that we do have this pot of money, but if the pot's empty, then it happens. Is it coming upon a budget for a town to look to other things or possibly have a resolution like this on the books? That's, that's, that's hard at all.
Does it help them? I guess that's my question. What's the guy asking for decisions? I mean, although they're saying, alright, this is what we believe, but when action comes out, is the action bad? Well, the board of the MASC is trying to, is asking as many school districts, school board committees to support this so that it can strengthen their argument, the more districts and sign allegations, the more, the more strength that it have against us. The request also, and the resolution also has specific to number five, big representatives, representatives of the state offices support this as well. So if we were to vote to support this, we also have, as a high voice, a matter, two high representatives asking to support this.
Mr. Chair, a question about the COVID one. And actually, actually talking about the plan, and this is a question. Have you seen, um, enormous additional staff coming here as related to COVID?
Yeah, no, it's a fair question. You're gonna see it, it has most covered. So it depends against the personal law and bill. Uh, you know, if we have to come back, modify in person at six feet just apart, that in and of itself is 39 percent of teachers that are even here at Tinswell Elementary School, let alone this one, that's just the elementary school. Uh, so there could be significant costs. We're talking about a higher schedule, double as a process, additionally, running.
Is this going into state office?
State.
State. Because I think, I don't think that's a, we're playing a whole other game.
Oh, that's, that's.
I don't think.
And it does mean covered under this resolution. I haven't read it.
Certainly. No, this is for COVID expenses. But, you know, anything, anything that we spend, so the great that Joe talked about is on $225 per student in your district, as we are, to roll about $355, $353 for us. That has to split between March and December, correct Joe? Whereas the CARES Act money carries through all the time for school year next year on the town side. So working, we're working very closely now at that care on the town side to make sure that we incorporate funding accordingly, to make sure that we're spending what we can right now and maximize the dollars. I'll answer the question.
No, no, I just want to make sure. It's state funds that make sense to strongly lobby the state house for their funds to intact the rainy day funds that they have to help offset. The town of Tinswell that supports how many schools? Middle school, charter school, middle technical school, and. So there are four schools, so.
So there's extra burden. Five. A bit out of ground.
Twice.
We had our poor transportation.
Just wanted to vocalize that because we already have more expenses than they were counting because of numbers that we have to support and expectations.
And actually, if we could establish for one minute, the, the $1 million that the towns get in front of them, is the vocational school, Doctor Zam Academy, Valparaiso, are, are any of them getting these funds as well? Do they have access to the town's?
So, so I'll speak to innovation, Natalie, you can bring a little bit. Maybe I'll go with 25 per student. Joe, I'm not sure whether or not.
Is it gonna file now?
I doubt they are, but.
I, I'm under the indication that since they have no real relationship with SE from a procedural standpoint, as they were putting it, to me, uh, I would say that, you know, that door's three foot away.
Certainly, yeah.
So what about the $1 million that the town has received to cover the COVID?
Yep.
Are prayerful, Valparaiso, are they eligible to?
No, that's not a, no.
Now, when, do you know when you'll hear about which? Do you know when you'll hear about which?
We're gonna talk about tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all the work of the task.
Sorry. I don't have the questions to get asked, so. So do you want to take me one at a time or show it to? Seek a motion, please. So, uh, program law would need a motion, I would say. I would like to, we'll shoot this. So, permanent discussion, two seconds on the proposed resolution. One, two? Opposed? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stand? Alright, so I carry 700. So COVID passes. So now we, motion on the second. I would make that motion. That's a check. Second. No second. There's no second to that? Okay. Then I would ask, um, for the proposed change. We strike. We strike the last seconds from the, from the resolution. So you want to make a motion? I would make a motion to adopt this resolution minus the last seconds. Okay. So a new motion? Second? Okay. So discussion on the second resolution, last one in the front? So for me personally, I don't think that one's really something as a school committee we should be involved in. I think we have, Dr. Wencro does a great job, he gets his guy on the train state. I don't think that falls within our ground responsibility to dictate to him, his staff, and what the criteria should be. That would be. Myself, I would say that it's even more important for small districts who do not have the type of representation within the ranks of staff to be mindful of what this resolution says. It means that we will, um, make sure that we are thoughtful when putting together curriculum, thoughtful when we're hiring people, and thoughtful, even more thoughtful, when dealing with issues that may arise from a student population or our company. The issues that they may see at home are in the schools are very different from what their classmates might have. This is saying that we do our very best indices and identically that this follows under our policies so that it is within our program to say that we support this resolution and that we continue to adapt our practices within these guidelines. I think we already do that. It just doesn't hurt to reconsider this sometimes and to evaluate what we're doing to make sure that we're making it fair for them. Awesome.
I appreciate you making this forward to us. And I think when you started with sharing this, you said that we could either accept it or take it as informational. And listening to the pieces that you shared, I do agree with Brian that we have, you guys specifically focused technically on, specifically focused on our policies and therefore I, I don't feel that it's something else.
Yes, any comments?
Joe, can I make a comment? With the school case revision, I would like to, to take this resolution back to the students, the work of the students on it. As you know, yeah, that's gonna reach out to us, also, sorry, after the George Floyd, George Floyd protest and wants to really look at our curriculum and really dive into it. But that time Dr. Wencro said he'd step up and work with Mrs. Teo, our vice principal of social, to talk about social issues and social justice at the high school. So if the committee would be, okay, I'd like to take this back as a, as a starting point for discussion. So we can be reflective and really look at our curriculum and have these conversations. I think that might be helpful for the kids. I think it would be great if the kids could come up with some kind of initiative, permission, permission statement or something that they want to be that reflects how they feel about their school, from the kids' perspective. To me, it's not political, too. It's about them, it's about how they feel about the culture of their school. And I think that's important, I think it's important, part of this. Yeah, so I, I guess what I'm asking is if you don't mind, I'll take this, I'll take this statement and work with the students and have the students come back and present at some point as to what they believe, their thoughts.
Looking at between learning.
Learning, absolutely, absolutely.
And reflection.
Absolutely. Well, I, to your drive and work, our social studies program, we're looking at things right now, you know, maybe, maybe we need to, uh, we try to stay guarded by this, at this respect of the year. It is our social studies program review this year anyways, so it might be good to add this as a forefront of our minds if we're going through some of our programming classes, talking, so we can have that conversation.
What's on this? How do you feel about?
I'm very happy. Thank you very much. I, you know, any, any consideration of this resolution?
Yeah, I think if we bring it through to the kids, I can ask them where to go. What else does that mean?
And they're ones who are most affected.
Absolutely.
And I'm not trying to put anything down, but we're all very comfortable with the environment. We are not at schools. We don't know what it's like there. I'm sure we'd be very comfortable if we were students, if they got a chance to weigh in on that, I heard students, I think they would be.
So, I'll take the motion. Is the motion on table?
Okay.
So, is the motion on floor right now? Would you give a draw?
I would, for the progress resolution. But no, we should note that when we did a motion to accept it, modifying the last sentence, I did not get a second on that, did I get a second? I think I get no initial support. I would make a motion then that we accept. I've got plenty against ideas, we're bringing it to the students and having discussions with them in turn.
New motion?
Sure.
Okay. Twenty seconds. Any discussion on that? I'm going to take, I figured it'd make more sense if it actually comes from the students affected by this, from the town, so rather than, you know, from up on high, so you know, support this.
One thing I just wanted to come out, is just positivity.
Absolutely.
Looking hard, honestly, young, being part of that exercise, always part of the debate. Waiting on positivity, because of the presence of this, our community, alright?
Absolutely. Alright, so, on favor?
Hi.
Opposed? I carry a seven zero zero. Can you give some more?
Thank you.
Brian, it's Mr. Messina.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are nine bill warrants circulating around the table tonight. One of them is the final FY20 bill warrant, with the bill being paid at Town Hall for unleaded fuel for the maintenance vehicles for the month of June. Also are eight FY21 warrants. The warrant numbers are counts and amounts, but both of those are jointly drawn, and nothing of a priority, I think, compared with the next year.
Thank you very much. So, we're being respectful. Relax.
Almost set, thank you.
Great, great, great. I didn't make it, but this is on video. Fantastic.
And the patch.
Yes, yes. Congratulations.
Almost set, thank you. Almost.
Congratulations to the seniors for their graduation, and thanks to the staff for putting on such a great graduation. It was the first in teenage rural high school history, you know, on that football field that I'm aware of anyway.
Yep.
And it was, it was quite the event, so thank you. It was very difficult to put together, and I think we recommended small steps, or to do a job, and it's a great opportunity.
I go to the town. Congratulations, class, on the fourth floor.
And I want to put a parent hat on now, and thank the school committee superintendent and the high school administration for everything they managed to do for the kids. It wasn't easy for them, from mods right on through. They lost a lot, but there was a lot of excitement about what was done, so thank you.
We lasted six weeks.
Yeah, congrats, class, it was like, great job. Congratulations, class, on 2020. It was very hot. Very hot. Don't call anyone, if they can eat out on stage, I stepped out, I ran up into them all. It was good to see some of the creative parents in Rally Bar, and all those, smart, self born Joe in the suit, right, and just wearing this little camera. Great ceremonies always, a good show.
That's it? No need for a second or second. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thanks.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? I carry a seven zero zero. You're in. Have a great night.
Thank you.